...to pool and not just try, but pool in some information together on very short notice, including this meeting. We will be a little bit clunky. Our city clerk is being evacuated as a result of the fires. So that's why we're looking just a little bit out of place. We had to kick out a program out of this space so that we could use this space. So while this looks slightly smooth, it's taken a lot of effort to get us here. So I just want to thank staff for that. At this time then, I'd like to turn it over to Matthew, our deputy city manager, then I'll have some closing remarks at the end.
Thank you, Magda. Again, my name is Matthew Chidister. I'm your deputy city manager. And I am currently overseeing our Recreation and Community Services Division. And within that division, we actually hired, under the direction of council, a management analyst that will be supporting community services. And one of her highest priorities will be working with the other agencies involved in the homelessness efforts. And she started today. So it's great timing and looking forward to bringing her onboard and all the work she's going to do here. Sure, sure. Jennifer, could you stand up? And this is Jennifer Acuna. She started with us today. She's a management analyst and comes with a great background in both the public sector and the nonprofit arenas. And we're really looking forward to the work that she's going to do. Thank you, Jennifer. Oh, sorry. I'm going to start just by giving some brief information to set some context for the discussion today. The first thing I want to do is just talk about our homeless statistics that we have here. You'll receive some more detailed statistics later on in this presentation. But each, every other January on the odd year, the county works with other agencies to organize what's called a one-day homeless count. And volunteers go out into the community and hit every single census tract in the county and count the number of unsheltered homeless that they can find in those areas. And this was done in 2013. It goes back more historically, but in 2013, 2015, and 2017, those are our most recent numbers, January of each of those years. In 2013, that number peaked at over 100 individuals. In 2015, that number was reduced to about 80 individuals. And in 2017, our most recent year, that number was down at about 40 individuals. And that anecdotally matches what we as staff understand to be our kind of standing homeless population here. There are probably individuals that we're not aware of that might be in areas we're not aware of, but we are working with that 40, a number of about 40 homeless individuals. What we're going to talk about today is what we call chronic homeless. You have situational homeless individuals or families that maybe lose a job or are displaced from their current housing and with a little bit of assistance from the local government or other programs can be brought back into being permanently housed very quickly. The chronic homeless, which we'll talk about today, are individuals typically that have been on the streets for an extended period of time. There's been work to help them get into a housed situation. They often have many barriers, including physical or mental health issues. There are often substance abuse issues that we've got to deal with. Sometimes these are sex offenders that have trouble finding a place that they can rent. And so those are some of the barriers that we often deal with in helping these individuals get the services they need and get housed. Some of the current services that are available, I'm going to start kind of at the county level and work our way down. The County of San Mateo has an office on homelessness, and that's in our Human Services Agency for the County of San Mateo. And they work to really coordinate all the efforts to work with our homeless individuals and families and find housing for them and find the services they need countywide. And they're a great partner for the city as they manage that kind of countywide. There are several homeless shelters for these types of chronically homeless individuals. They're located in South San Francisco, Redwood City, and East Palo Alto. There are also other family shelters that are located up and down the peninsula. There is a hotel voucher program where families that meet certain strict criteria can receive vouchers to stay in hotels for a certain period of time. These have been very difficult for the county to use, especially in recent years with the cost of hotel rooms, with, you know, travel and tourism up. There's a greater demand from your more traditional users of hotels. And we understand from the county that there's been some issues with what's happened in rooms when these hotel vouchers have been used. And so that just creates challenges for utilizing these vouchers. There's also transportation services available from the county. And as we come here to the coast side, the county just across the parking lot has their Coastside Clinic, which is a full-time medical clinic, mental health clinic. They also have benefit analysts there that help individuals get on general assistance to receive cash and food and housing and qualify for all those federal and state programs that are available as well. And that is always available here on the coast side at the Coastside Clinic. There are also core service providers. These are nonprofits that work with local government agencies and are really connected to the community and know the families and know the individuals that we work with. And in the mid-coast and Half Moon Bay, that's Coastside Hope, which is located up in El Granada. And in Pescadero, there is Puente, and they serve the Pescadero area. These, these groups provide vouchers, referrals to different programs, case management, food, money, clothing assistance. They're a really good first line of working with these families and these individuals to get the help they need. And these aren't just here for homeless families or families that are close to homelessness, but they're really here to serve anybody in need, and they do a lot of great work. We also here in this same complex, there's an office for El Centro de Libertad, and they provide part-time here on the coast substance abuse services, which are really important and are, they're a partner with some of these other nonprofits that we work with. And then last but not least, the county has contracted with Life Moves out of San Mateo to develop what's called HOT teams. And these are interdisciplinary homeless outreach teams that provide very intensive case management. They get to know homeless individuals on a personal basis. They develop great relationships with them and really work with them to try to work through a lot of the issues that they deal with that are barriers to permanent housing, ultimately to get them housed. And we have with us today Mark Stevens, who is with Life Moves, and he's here to talk a little bit about what they do and some of the individuals that they work with. Mark?
Yeah, the podium's fine. Thank you. Hi. Mark Saban with Life Moves. And we have a multitude of programs, but if you're taking Life Moves and kind of split it in half as an organization, we have our shelter sites, which is family sites, and also sites for single homeless adults. And then we have the other part of the organization, which is the outreach services, which is what I'm here to talk about. And the outreach services program that I'm focusing on is our homeless outreach teams. And our homeless outreach teams, I have a team of six, and we cover with our homeless outreach teams all of San Mateo County. And within San Mateo County, we've broken up to different regions, so we actually have five regions. And we have a outreach case manager who's in Half Moon Bay almost on a daily basis. And that case manager has developed relationships with the homeless folks in Half Moon Bay that we've, we're working currently with about 24 different homeless folks in Half Moon Bay. Twelve of those have been identified as living behind Safeway. The age range for the folks that we're working with, and I know the number was said is about 40, so this is just the number we're working with. There's hidden pockets that we can't even find. So our number 25 isn't everybody that's homeless in Half Moon Bay. And the age range of the folks is about 25 to 80. And what we do with these folks, our outreach workers are meeting these individuals on a daily basis. We know folks by name, and we're actually doing case plans with individuals and working with them. Our ultimate goal, Life Moves' ultimate goal as an organization is to return people to housing. And that's what we're working on folks with. The folks that we're finding, I don't want to generalize, but the majority of the folks here in Half Moon Bay are the type of individuals that are going to need permanent supportive housing. And there's vouchers for that, but there's a limited number of vouchers, and it's a complicated process. But we've had success over the last couple of years. We've housed in the last 18 months about approximately 60 people straight from the streets in the permanent supportive housing. But it takes a lot of work. There's a lot of documentation that goes with it. But how we get there is developing the relationships and working with every single agency that was mentioned, collaborating with BHRS for the mental health needs, and collaborating with agencies for substance abuse needs. We collaborate, the reason that our program works is because of our collaboration with law enforcement. We work very closely with law enforcement where they help us identify where people are, we let them know where people are, and we meet with them on a regular basis, and I'll get to our monthly meetings in just a minute. But law enforcement knows what we're trying to achieve, so as they're addressing folks out in the streets as they're identifying folks, they're pretty much aware of what we're working on with the folks. So it's kind of a carrot and a stick approach, saying, I know HOT is offered you a bed, we've done this, we've done that, so you might want to take that option otherwise. Law enforcement has different options. The approach that we use with our homeless clients is called a multidisciplinary team approach. And what that means is we have a working list in Half Moon Bay, in the other regions as well, where we have the folks listed, and we are working on a plan, an individualized treatment plan, for all those folks on our multidisciplinary team list. Some folks, it might be just to get them to take care of some health needs, which we partner with San Mateo Medical Center and the Street Medicine Team to address those needs. Some folks, it might be recovery needs, mental health needs, clothing needs. We'll meet them where they're at, and it's sometimes quickly, sometimes slowly. We've had success with working with people. We've been doing this for eight years. And over that eight years, we've worked with people that it took four or five years to finally get them into housing. Sometimes it takes 35 or 45 contacts with the person, just saying hello, for a person to say, okay, I'm going to engage with you, because you never know what the magic is where they will engage with you. So our outreach approach is, like I said, getting to know people very, very well and building a relationship over time, learning what their needs are, and keeping at it. It's persistence. We just don't give up. And some of the folks that I've mentioned that we've housed are the toughest, are the toughest, are the toughest people that you never would have thought were going to be housed. So I'm really open to questions, and I think that's, you probably have lots of questions around this. But we're out there working with the population, doing everything we can. But you have a population that's real tough. And I don't want to generalize, but one of the things that kind of comes forth, especially for the population here on the coast, and it's kind of true for almost anywhere, whether it's Redwood City, or Belmont, or South City, people, it's a, we call it the homeless community. It's truly a community where they're at. So when you have folks up here in Half Moon Bay, which is kind of a unique environment itself, folks over here in Half Moon Bay, they've really built themselves a community. And so many services are on the other side of the hill that, again, not generalizing, but there's a strong belief that folks really want the services over on this side. So we're bringing the services to them that we can, but there's no shelter over here, and there's limitations. But I just want the city council to be really aware that we're strongly supported by the county in terms, our funding comes from the county, with a little bit of private funding, but mostly county funding. And we're in communication with them. They attend our multidisciplinary team meetings, so the county helps us link into some other complicated services that we're partnering on this issue. And it's a tough issue. We don't, we don't have the magic, we think we have some of the magic, but it takes a lot of different creative solutions. And sometimes every different community, like Half Moon Bay, Pacifica, other communities, have to throw in their own flavor because it's their community. Yeah, sure. I'm sorry about that. So the multidisciplinary team meeting, which is obviously held once a month, the people that attend that meeting, of course, is the HOT case manager, law enforcement, behavioral health recovery services, El Centro de Libertad, we're talking about here, some faith-based communities attend, core agencies attend, Coastside Clinic attends. So we're all sitting around, and we put up on the wall, and we'll put up a person's name, and we'll have a whole list of different information on the person, but the bottom line is, what's going on? And so it's not just a report out where the case manager says, and here's what I did last month next. It's, here's what's going on, here's where some of the barriers are. And all the people around the table serve a purpose where they'll say, okay, I know where to find him, oh, you might want to try this approach with him, he has a sister up in Eureka. Whatever information there is, whatever we're trying to achieve, it's truly a multidisciplinary team approach. And so these meetings are every single month where we go through everybody that's on that MDT list, is what we call it for short. And people generally come on that list as a group consensus, saying, here's somebody we want to start working with. And the people come off the list generally about 60 to 90 days after they've been housed. So I was at, you know, I wish I could say this for the MDT that's here, but I was at the East Palo Alto MDT Tuesday, and three people came off the list because they got housed. We want that to happen everywhere. It's happened here. We've had, we've had people housed here. We've taken people over into shelters at Maple Street. But the MDT meetings are very, very valuable, where we stay connected to our homeless community and what the issues are and keep pushing forward. And we have some of the, we have tough people on those lists, and we're making inroads, but I just, to set expectations, it's sometimes quickly, sometimes slowly. We're working with a real tough population, but we're creative, we're tenacious, and we're having great success, and we love what we do, and we're glad we're here.
Vice Mayor Penrose has a question.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
May, yeah, you just have to push the button. No. Sorry. Sorry, can you hear me now? Okay. You meet on a, on a regular basis out in the field with the clients. What do you do in inclement weather?
So what, so we're still out here.
So you come out with umbrellas?
Ponchos.
Ponchos.
Rain.
Looking for them. Is it more difficult in inclement weather to contact someone?
Well, actually, yes and no. It depends, again, where the community is, because people, when it's raining, have a tendency to go to the same places that are likely to be dry.
Mm-hmm.
So we know where those places are. So, you know, people will scatter in the weather, but it's, so it's, I wouldn't say it's much more difficult because we know where they, we know where they go. So we still can have access to them during inclement weather.
Okay. My other question is, where do you hold your MDT meetings?
The MDT meeting here is right in this parking lot across the way.
In the, outside of the EOC?
They're, they're held in the conference room of the Coastside Clinic on the first floor.
Ah, okay. Good, thank you.
Sure, sure.
Councilmember Rhabak.
As push. Okay. Thank you for all the good work you do.
Thank you.
I had heard, and apparently I'm wrong, that HOT teams only meet once a week on the coast. You claim otherwise.
Yeah, we're, we're out here on a regular basis. I think I'd be misleading if I said we're out here every day because there's, there's other work that we have to do in terms of collecting data and all that kind of stuff. But we're out here on a regular basis, once a week. No, we're out here on a regular basis.
That's, that's really nice.
Yes.
My other question is, you mentioned that there are shelters over the hill, but there's nothing on the coast side. In your opinion, if there were a shelter available, especially in inclement weather, would the homeless population here take advantage of it?
We think so. We think so. You know, you provide the right type of shelter, the best type of environment that you possibly can, with the right types of services and the right types of people running it, yes, we could, we can, we can draw people. Part of the reason we believe we could draw people into a shelter is our relationships with the folks. That's why we're sometimes successful, often successful, at getting people over the hill into shelters. So yes, I think people would utilize it.
That's wonderful to hear. And my last comment is, I just became aware of this group called the Downtown Streets Team, which meets in San Jose, Palo Alto, San Francisco. I went to a meeting, I was totally impressed with all the good work they do. Are you interested in working with them, or you have any comments about how we could do what they're doing, which is get employment?
Their phenomenal work, what they do. We don't, we, we are open to collaborating with absolutely anybody. We are familiar with the Downtown Streets Team. We haven't really partnered with them, but we're always open to conversations, and this only works if we partner with organizations. We can't do this by ourselves.
Thank you very much.
So there is or are inclement weather shelters over the hill?
So during the inclement weather, we do get, we do activate inclement shelter, and it's a multitude of shelters. A couple of Life Moves shelters and also some other shelters that aren't part of Life Moves do open their doors and add a couple of cots for inclement weather. And for some of the overflow that there might be, there is also a motel piece of it that we utilize to bring people in if the motel, if the shelters are full with folks from inclement weather. So that gets activated more or less the week of or the day after Thanksgiving and runs through March, give or take. And so we actually are, are gatekeepers for the inclement weather shelters. We do not activate the shelters. The county, based on weather service reports, activates those shelters.
May I try to clarify? I think I just want to, Mike, should we get terms correct? I think we have emergency, what used to be called, emergency shelter, so folks can, and help me if I'm incorrect, folks can, individuals are here, who are here now, whether it's wintertime or springtime, can take advantage of those shelters over the hill.
Correct.
And what the county generally does when it's inclement weather, they add beds, they add cots. So it's the, it's the inclement weather portion of it is just adding additional capacity, but the facility is already in place and folks can take advantage of that year-round, essentially. Is that correct?
But no, but so the inclement weather piece?
Not the inclement weather piece, but the, the.
The shelters themselves.
The shelter.
Yeah, so the shelter sites themselves are there year-round, and people, if they want to go through the core agencies and get the appropriate referrals, or actually people we contact and refer into ourselves, year-round. Inclement weather is only activated by the county when it is inclement weather, and then we add cots into our different shelter sites.
Okay, so there's a huge storm, say in December, and lots of rain, lots of cold. What happens here? Does the HOT team go to the individuals that are here and say, there's a place for you to get out of the rain, and here's how we can take you there? Like, what's the process for somebody here who wants to get out of the rain?
You just described it. Exactly that. When there is inclement weather, we get notified, depend, the notifications, if I'm correct, the notifications come in the morning of the night of, even in anticipation of, not, oh, it's raining, let's activate.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's a close watch on the weather so they, so they can activate. When we find out it's activated, all the HOT team members say, hey, it's activated, go tell your folks if they want, they can get over there. There's a taxi mechanism. We won't do, we don't do the transport for that because we'd be, we just can't handle that kind of transport, but we will work with folks with the taxi vouchers to get them from here over to there. And then there's a piece where there's taxi vouchers to get people back. So they have to work through the core agencies, there's a process people have to go through so we can make sure that we are managing correctly. But we're hot on the heels when we find out that it's activated, that we don't just, we, we need to tell people, that's our job.
Mm-hmm.
We want people to be safe and warm and dry and off the streets, so we get out here in full force and let people know in the course of our daily work of just connecting with them anyway.
So they tell you that they're interested in getting out of the inclement weather, and then you hook them up with these taxi vouchers or whatever?
Yes.
So they have to call like a local cab company and?
Yeah, so we.
Or do you call it for them, or?
Send them to the core agency, the core agency does what they need to do, and we get them over.
And they leave their stuff behind?
See, well, thank you for bringing that up. That's one of the issues with people leaving and accessing services when they, actually from any homeless site, is their stuff. And whether they leave their stuff behind or not, that's kind of up to them, but these places only have so much, so much storage. So that is, that is a reason some people will stay outside, is because they've got their stuff.
Does that include animals, like dogs or pets?
Yeah, so we do do our best to accommodate the pets. It's tough.
Mm-hmm.
Tough for us. More and more shelter sites are accommodating the pets, but folks will often, if they can't bring the pets, they will stay outdoors.
Do you ever have to turn people away from inclement weather shelters?
No, because we have the motel overflow.
Okay.
So in, in eventuality that the sites are full, we'll go into the motels. So we've never left anybody out.
Okay. And so of the, the local population here, do many of them take advantage of the inclement weather program, or do they resist that and want to stay? What's the?
I'm going to say it's not a significant number of folks that take advantage of the inclement weather from over here. We could run some numbers on that and see how many people came over, so offhand, but the general consensus, people will kind of bear it, bear with it.
Mm-hmm.
And because of the items, maybe pets, or just, you know, I'd rather not be hassled going back and forth, this, this will pass. And we're working with a population that's very creative and very resilient and can weather through it.
Great. So one last question. So of the, the local population of homeless, how many would you say are over the age of 55 or 62? How many of them would qualify for, you know, senior, low-income, senior housing?
I'm going to go off the, the MDT list that went on, the last Half Moon Bay MDT list, ballparking it, six or seven are over the age of 55.
So these people would qualify maybe for, has it ever been looked at that maybe they could be enrolled in low-income senior housing and sort of get, you know, a favored place over some others because of their situation, or?
Common theme of the conversations at many of our MDTs is senior housing, how to identify senior housing. So there's a significant number of folks in that age range.
Mm-hmm.
And also, you know, I kind of say, over the age of 50, because folks on the street at 50, it's, it's, you know, it's, that's like 70, 75. I mean, it's, it's, it's rough out there. So when we talk about an aging homeless population, we're really dipping into the 50s. But we are commonly talking about senior housing. We place people in senior housing.
Mm-hmm.
So it is part of our vernacular when we're talking about options.
Great.
Absolutely.
So I have no further questions, councilmembers? Any more questions, gentlemen? Okay. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Very educational.
Thank you, Mark. The work that they do is incredible. I've, I've been able to attend some of these HOT team meetings, and we always make sure that there's city staff there so that we're involved in that process. And the amount of care and the relationships that are built, it just adds to it because this group knows these people as individuals and cares about their well-being. It's not just a job, it's, they're really invested in these people, and it's really wonderful to see. And it's, it's a, it's a moving meeting to attend, to say the least. There's a couple other things we wanted to cover as staff before council really gets into its, its own discussion on this. We, as many of us know, the city recently acquired 555 Kelly Avenue, which is a home at the end of this parking lot here. And the acquisition was done as part of an open market deal, and the direction from council was that it was advantageous for the city to kind of complete our strip of land for this civic center here, which means we purchased this home without a long-term plan yet. That's something that staff would be working towards preparing for some policy decisions from the council. In preparation for this meeting, some questions had been asked about potentially using that property for some sort of a daytime resource center, maybe for the homeless. And so yesterday, Public Works and myself met with an architect, and we did a walkthrough of the property. And we talked about what are things that need to be done in order to make this property fit for public use. You know, we have certain standards we have to follow anytime we are operating a public facility. The first and probably the biggest hurdle we would have to cross would be the coastal development permit. Utilizing that center for anything other than a single-family home would require a coastal development permit. And that, at the very least, would require going to the Planning Commission for a hearing. And so we're, that would probably take a couple of months. In addition to the permitting piece, because of the way we acquired the home and how quickly we had to act on acquiring the home, we don't yet have information on the structure itself and the condition that it's in. So we would need to look at the electrical for its ability to serve this kind of purpose and for safety. We'd have to look at the plumbing, the HVAC, we'd have to investigate for asbestos and lead in the paint. All those things would need to be addressed, first identified and then addressed before we could utilize that property for public use. Additionally, anytime the local government uses a facility for public use, it has to be brought to certain ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act standards. And so there's work that would need to be done to get people into that building, out of that building safely and in accordance with the ADA. And the restroom specifically would have to be addressed so that there would be facilities for those with disabilities. What we found from that walkthrough is that in its current condition, that property is not fit for public, for use as a public facility, and that we're looking at probably several months and a significant amount of money to prepare it for public use.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yeah. When you say a significant amount of time, it comes to my mind that the, probably the most lengthy thing would be the coastal development permit. The other things could be looked at in tandem, contractor, electrician, plumber, hazards person, whatever. That may not take several months. I don't know. But, but my guess is, if we. But, but my guess is if we really wanted to do something, we could do that fairly quickly, within the next couple of weeks maybe even. The other, that's it for right now. I can't think what my other question was.
Sure. And I'm not the expert on this, but the, the discussion that went on between Public Works and the architect, who are experts in this field, they don't believe that that property could be made available for public use anytime in the next several months. So we'd, we'd be well into the winter season before that could be made available.
My other question was, how much money are we talking about?
We couldn't get numbers on this kind of a walkthrough, so that's something that, as you said, simultaneously with any of the permitting work, initial permitting work as far as the use permit goes, could be investigated and we could get a number for you then.
Do we have any other presentations from other groups?
The last thing we wanted to mention before you get into your discussion is that the plans that have been put in place for a potential winter shelter here on the coast side. Earlier this year, the County of San Mateo allocated funding and issued an RFP for an inclement weather shelter to cover the winter months here on the coast side. The results of that RFP were not what they had hoped for and, but it did give them information about what it would cost and kind of the logistics of making that happen. And I'll just share in very general terms, for us to have a three-month shelter, it would need to be staffed 24 hours a day based on the population we're working with here. And it would still only have limited services compared to what some of the more permanent shelters offer. They were looking at doing some sort of a temporary structure like a tent. You'd have to bring in portable restrooms and sanitation facilities, which there are options for that. The cost for a three-month shelter is approximately $210,000.
I had heard that the cost for the tent, if we're not using it for a 24-hour shelter, if we're using it for overnight, is closer to $15,000 a month. In fact, it's $15,000 for the first month. And then on top of that, you have staffing. And I was given sort of an ad hoc figure of $50,000 for three months of staffing. So I don't, I don't know how accurate those figures are, but you're talking right now about 24-hour shelter for $200,000. So if we have that and said it was a night shelter, night shelter only for inclement weather, we might be looking at a figure closer to $100,000.
I'm going to defer to.
So I got those numbers directly from the Human Services Agency Director. So I don't know, we're not the experts. I don't know what that number would be. I don't know. So that number is including the cost of the tent, the cost of the flooring and the cost of the staffing.
And the other ancillary things that you would need, such as the sanitation facilities and things like that. What I can say, in addition to what Magda shared, is I participated on that RFP panel and that, the review panel for that RFP, there were, it was a multi-disciplinary team. We had some experts on shelters and they believed that the numbers that I just shared with you, that is what it would take. And the consensus was it really needed to be a 24-hour shelter. We can talk to the county to get more details as to why that would be necessary in our situation, but they weren't really considering anything other than a 24-hour shelter for the coast side.
Councilmember Rarbach?
Matthew, the money that would have got this RFP to work, could that money still be available if we did something that was not officially part of that RFP but was just a, a city initiative like we've been talking about?
I don't, I don't know. That's, it was all county funding. It was leveraged with, the proposer was going to put in some of their own funds. I'm not sure what would be available to the coast side at this point.
But it's not out of the question that that money could be available?
I think Vice Mayor Penrose can also speak to this, but Vice Mayor Penrose met with Supervisor Horsley, Director Rodriguez, and I think some of her senior staff that deal with homeless issues. And my understanding is that they would not be interested in funding something that was different than or outside of the 24-hour sheltering because they've got experiences and understand that it requires really 24 hours of service and of staffing to be available. So my understanding was that they would not be interested in funding something different than that. They are, however, interested in providing support and doing a cleanup and a creek cleanup restoration and encampment cleanup of the area behind Safeway, which council has talked about in the past. But again, Vice Mayor Penrose may speak, but that's what she told me when I spoke to her by phone.
For clarification, are you saying, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Vice Mayor Penrose was next.
Yeah, my impression when I spoke with Don Horsley and Eliana and Peggy Jensen was that they had $85,000 available and they would like to make that money available. The city just had to come and tell them how they were going to use it. It was not, I was not told it needed to be 24 hours. That was not part of our conversation.
I can't speak to that, that, we did not have that conversation.
I guess it's just a follow-up. There might be money available from the county to have a, if they insisted on a 24-hour shelter, the city could chip in some portion, the county could chip in a significant portion. Is that possible? I don't know whom I'm talking to. So if you don't know, it's not out of the question. Okay, thank you.
Are we ready for public comment?
So that concludes our presentation and the information we have. We just want to remind you, we have Mark Saban here from Life Moves to answer additional questions and staff can answer any questions.
And I just wanted to provide a couple of closing comments. Again, we've tried to provide the council with some information. We've heard comments from several of you that were slightly different. We've heard people who say they speak not so much on behalf of you, but have had a conversation with one or more of you. And so we're, we try to provide information that we hope is helpful to you in terms of having your discussion today. We don't have a recommendation because we're not really sure where you are with this conversation. We do know, and for the public's benefit, the council set at their priority setting session, one of the five priorities was to deal with homelessness and that was specifically directed or specifically related to the cleanup, cleaning up the area behind Safeway. So depending on where this conversation goes, we may or may not need to adjust in terms of any timelines moving forward.
We're going to move on to public comment. Donald Sheardon, please come to the podium.
Good afternoon. Is this on? Yeah, I used to volunteer in Half Moon Bay, but we got to a point where the police had to go around and round up people at Christmas because there just wasn't, we never had a lot of homeless people. Forty homeless people, that's not many. Santa Cruz has got 2,240. Ucaya has got 2,300 people. This is, this is a piece of cake. This is not a big deal. This has never been a big deal. We should, it's a shame that we don't have a shelter. I mean, last time I talked to the council, it was about, did all this work on the marijuana thing, but nothing's been done here. Half the people here tonight are public officials. And I just feel it's really bad because it's so, like I say, it's so easy to do. I've made shelters myself. I've made a bicycle shelter, unique bicycle shelter. I've made a shelter for turning a car into a shelter. I'm currently building a shelter that can be trailed. So I enjoy doing that, using my engineering experience. This stuff's very easy to solve. I volunteer a lot down in Santa Cruz every year and I see how it's done there. And you bought this house just down here on Kelly Street and you don't know how much it's going to cost to fix up. You don't know the damage. You don't know anything about it. It's so easy to go out and have an opinion on that. We should have a shelter. I understand in the review, and it didn't come up today, that one of the reasons was it's not going to be utilized is because it's too close to the Coonis School. And I understand that because a lot of the homeless people do have problems. A lot of the homeless people sadly are VA veterans. One of the things they do in Santa Cruz when they find homeless people and they do the survey, they find kids. Kids know where these people live. My kid, a lot of kids know where these people live. Adults really don't know, but 40, that's not a hard number to deal with. So I think, you know, this meeting we're having here, there's not a very big turnout. We really haven't moved along. We talked for years. When I came to Half Moon Bay 28 years ago, we're talking about replacing the police station. It was a temporary building. This building was being built. We had this, it's hardly utilized. Lot of money has been spent. We have Medutra Park, that was all like redone. There's a lady in Medutra Park, she's been there for three months. Today, yesterday, I was sitting there in the park yesterday when social services came down and four people from social services came down. They sat down, they befriended her and they took her away. They helped her. That lady's been pushed around. It was right in front of City Hall. That's one lady, one lady who's down on her luck. She sleeps in the laundromats. She sleeps in the building where you're renting out around the corner, under a tarp for three months. I watch it every day. I work downtown. Every day I watch this. And this poor lady, she just sits there. She sleeps, she tries to sleep in the bathroom. She sleeps in the street. This is Half Moon Bay. This is, average home in Half Moon Bay is a million dollars. When I came here 27 years ago, we were like the poor cousins. Now we're not anymore. We're quite affluent. So this is absolute shame. You judge a society by how you treat your infirm, your old and your young people. And I see the traffic that goes on on Kelly Street here, crossing Highway One. You have plans to fix Highway One. I don't want to get off the subject, but I'm glad there's a crossing there now. But I see a lot of money being spent, like Skateboard Park. And I see these people behind Safeways and it's not been dealt with. It's never dealt with. And I don't see people with hard facts tonight. I see nothing from all the so-called experts, which are positive, forward-moving type of situations. I can build a homeless shelter for one person for $3,000. It's pretty makeshift, but you know, what you're talking about, it's $200,000 for six months, $210,000. That's $420,000 a year. That is $900 a month for every person that we have that's classified as homeless. That's how much that would be. That is a lot of money for those people. Now, I know a lot about looking after homeless and I know what happened in the city. I have a very good friend of mine and he ran the whole homeless program in San Francisco. He lives in Half Moon Bay. And he told me that what they learned in San Francisco is to deal with homeless people, you have to have them fixed location so you can go out and deal with diseases, you can go out and deal with problems, drugs, you can get information, literature to them. You have to have a fixed location to deal. You can't go out to the creek. You can't deal with it properly. It's like a moving target. People come, people go. So we need to have a place that they can assemble where the problem can be addressed, someone that, where they can go. We had someone die down by the creek last year. It was just a mess, the whole thing with their dog looking after it, the coordination.
Don, I'm going to ask you to wrap up. We have several other speakers.
No, I understand. I appreciate your time. I just hope that you'll conclude with some factual moving stuff because it's getting cold for these people. We have hazards in Florida, Houston, in Marin County, and they deal with that. We don't, we haven't had anything like that. I want to see how we're going to deal with just these 40 people. We're not thousands, just 40 people. So let's use our resources, please. Thank you.
Eric DeBode?
Thank you very much. Appreciate you having this meeting. So I just want to say, so I work with the Abundant Grace Coastside Worker. We do free community breakfast at the Coastside Lutheran Church. We run a farm employment program. I sit on the homeless outreach team with Life Moves and other folks and the Homeless Housing Collaborative. We are about to sign an agreement with the folks that own the house next to the Lutheran Church to have a rainy day project, just on rainy days and the following day during the winter months. But it's, so far it's only during the day. It is not all that needs to be done, but it's a step to help assist some of the homeless folks. I wanted to say the permanent supportive housing vouchers and the case management from Life Moves and the work with a lot of other agencies has yielded very positive results. Natalie and Stacy both are now housed. They both had serious health issues, a lot of other issues. Stacy had surgery. She's no longer hunkered over and has a problem with her legs. She's walking, she's driving, much, much better. Two other men, who I won't name, are in the senior center complex. One got a voucher, had been living in a van for over 10 years. The other was a very prominent part of the community, living in a garage for years. Now they both have places at the senior center. Teresa in the, in the park. Ben up by the airport in his van. And Kay in a tent behind Safeway are three elderly people who all have permanent supportive housing vouchers, but a lot of people abode services, Life Moves, a lot of us have not been able to find a place for them to rent. There is community support. One man lives in a garage over here in a neighborhood that someone's providing for him. Don Hillstrom, the community got together and raised thousands of dollars for him to buy an RV. He's now in his RV and doing a lot better than he was when he lived under the bridge. There's county support, the mobile medical team, the Support for Life Moves, Dignity on Wheels. They were at the Lutheran Church breakfast this morning and provided nine showers and six loads of laundry. So there is a lot going on. It's not time to simply close an encampment. I think a lot of you have said many times, you don't want to just do this action without thought and care and compassion. And I want to underscore that there are a lot of positive steps being taken and people are making changes in their lives and there is some success. There are three things I recommend. One, make a legal encampment on the city property behind Safeway. Provide trash in a porta potty. Have Dignity on Wheels, the Mobile Medical Team, Life Moves and Abundant Grace as partners to assist people. Create a fence to protect the creek and sensitive habitat and the environment. Two, work with us, work with the Homeless Housing Collaborative to purchase a property to create affordable housing for the homeless. The property next to the Lutheran Church is an ideal space, has no immediate neighbors except for a very supportive church congregation. Currently, I hear that someone may be making an offer on that property. If you are interested, you really need to look into that seriously and work with the Lutheran Church to purchase that property. Third, at 555 Kelly, house three elderly homeless people who have vouchers, Teresa, Kay and Ben. I'm sure Life Moves would be happy to talk about that, how we can be supportive. The mobile medical team can be supportive. Abundant Grace can be supportive of those three folks. You know, you're not talking about a daytime center, you're talking about renting people. I don't think, I think that would be different because it was rented before it was acquired by the city. We're only talking about using the vouchers, so there would be probably $5,000 or $6,000 per month to support that project and provide needed services for those three. That's Teresa who's in the park could be housed there. Kay, who's, she's a senior citizen, I think she's in her 70s, behind Safeway in a tent. And Ben, who's in a van by the airport. That would be a good first step. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
McCauskey.
McCauskey. McCauskey.
So thank you for your time. My name's John McCauskey. I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay for the last eleven years. I live in Belleville Boulevard behind Safeway, and I'm probably going to change the discussion a little bit about the impact on the residents of the homeless camp that is behind Safeway and want to ask you, the city council, what you can do to help us. I'm not taking away from the need of the homeless people to have a nice place to live, but there is disruption that is being created that's disrupting the Half Moon Bay residents by having that homeless camp exist where it is. There was a bonfire on Sunday, yes, Sunday. You know what happened on Sunday up in the North Bay. We called the fire department three times, nobody came out, three times. We don't know what to do. We've called the police, we, our neighbors called the police on a weekly basis because of noise at night, noise in the morning, it's disrupting the community. I understand they need a place to go. There's health hazards back there, we've seen them urinating two hundred feet away from our house into the creek, into the bushes. Our builder next door had to remove a fence because of the disruption to the ecosystem, but we allow a homeless community to destroy that ecosystem because we don't know what to do. I'm asking you, city council, what do we do? I think there's some solutions that are out there, but we're not acting on them. Thank you.
Paula Dyson?
Hello, thank you. Yeah, that was interesting. All right. One of the questions I actually had, and maybe we can get an answer, is of the sixty people that, and Eric maybe mentioned a couple of the people, but I'd be curious of the sixty people in the eighteen months that were placed in some kind of housing, how many were from Half Moon Bay? I think it's important to understand who our population is that's homeless here. Situational homeless, yes, is different than chronic homeless. There have been many presentations by our homeless population at our city council meetings where they, some of them have made clear that this is where they want to be, they just want to be on the coast. And they want to live here and that's it. And somehow, the rest of us, the rest of the community, has to figure out how to accommodate that. So I'm, I'm happy that we don't have major homelessness here. I'd like that to make sure that that doesn't happen in Half Moon Bay. We're such a small community, we're not Santa Cruz, we're not, we're not larger areas. We have very little land, and we have very little land that is not habitat land. And so there's, there isn't some pockets like I've seen in some other larger cities where people are put in the homeless community's place, let's say, outside the perimeter of a city or something like that. We've got a very small town, and so there's no, the homeless population are going to be obvious here. There's, there, there aren't light industrial areas that we can put a shelter in. Everything is pretty much residential here or habitat. So we have a very different environment here. I'd also be curious in that question, last year when we did have the rains in the winter, how many of our population took advantage of the outreach to get them into a shelter? Because if they are not going to go, you know, we can't force them. The only thing we can do is not, for instance, allow them to be next in this habitat area by the creek, living in that area. That's something that we can, as a city, do, and I've seen it in Portland, I was recently there. Last year, there were all kinds of encampments along the river. This year, we went there, zero encampments. They did something, but they, they moved the homeless out of sensitive areas. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Keith Terry.
Keith Terry from Coastside Hope, and I want to thank the council for considering this and taking the work of our, our, our country. I think the staff that are next to John was pointing out that, I just want to say, this is the button. Okay, sorry. I just want to say that, as has been referenced by the gentleman from Life Moves, Coastside Hope is part of the homeless outreach team. Our homeless outreach case manager, Jasmine, is here today, actually. We do want to agree that it is a joint effort. You do need a collaborative, you do need a lot of different folks working together to try to help folks who need help. We do work as the hub that does screening and assessment for folks going into the homeless system throughout the year and also during the inclement weather period. So whatever solution the city council wants to come to, any assistance you want to provide, we're here to work with you. We're happy to work with you in anything we can do to help our homeless neighbors. And we would be happy to be a hub for screening and assessment, just as we are with the folks from Life Re, I mean, Life Moves, the folks with the boat housing. We're happy to work with our safety net case managers, to work with the clients, and work with you guys to implement any solution you, you can come up with. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Robert Stebbins?
Thank you, council, staff, and people here. I want to take a look over a further hill and to talk to you very briefly about the Half Moon Bay Homeless Housing Collaborative. This is a group that was brought together at the request of Don Horsley to engage interested Half Moon Bay residents in confronting the problem of homelessness. And what we decided was that the solution, the best solution for homelessness is to house them. That is our laser focus, is to develop housing for the homeless. Now, we've heard the, all the many excellent supportive services that Life Moves, Abundant Grace, Coastside Hope provide, and the city. It does take a community. But this group came together a few months ago, it's a group of ten that's broadly based across the community, faith-based government. Deborah, thank you. An architect who has drawn up plans for between twenty and thirty small structures to be placed on something like a third of an acre. And people who are philanthropists, retired newspaper publisher, real estate agent working with the Coastal Commission, and other members of the city who have a long history of demonstrated interest and support for social activities. As I say, we have some initial plans for, for the form of housing. They will be small units. We also will be engaging larger entities like Coastside Hope and others, not Coastside Hope, Mid Penn, and others to help advise us about how we may develop a larger, more contained housing structure in the future. And also to provide us information along with that which comes from our architect about how to do financing. And speaking of finances, we right now for this initial aspect of, of housing and carrying forth into a more complex form of housing are looking for private funding, and we're making good progress upon that. Land is still something that we're looking at. We are looking at county land, we are looking at some farmland and some private land. We learned just recently, thank you, Magda, that the city apparently does not have much in the way of city land that can be used. We recognize that, as has been discussed, that the chronically homeless, which is who we have here, in large part, have many, many social, medical, and mental health and behavioral health problems. So part of the structures that we will be creating will have a conference room-type building, and we intend to provide very intense social service. The first six months out from the transition from homeless into housing is the roughest. It's very different being on your home in the bushes from being back in housing where perhaps you grew up as a child. And depending on the individual, it may take longer or shorter to come to bear. But efforts with Housing First in Philadelphia and in Canada where they have studied this very carefully and other places around the country show that intense case management is really helpful. And I, I will say that permanent supportive housing case management is helpful, but there's a kind of a rapid tail-off on the type of support, and we envisaged creating more intense support. So since we are not experts in housing the homeless, we have developed a list of educational topics. And we sent this plus a, a discussion of our progress to date to Don Horsley, to Eleonora Rodriguez at Human Services Agency, and Peggy Jensen, the county, deputy county manager. And they all have agreed to help educate us. Don is coming to the next meeting on the nineteenth of October. Peggy, once she returns from her current vacation, is going to come in the sixteenth of November to talk about Home for All. And by the way, congratulations for being a pilot. This is a collaboration, this group, and you know, Deborah and I and everybody, Eric, have talked about developing a rational plan for housing in Half Moon Bay. Don thought this was really a great idea. So why should we try to put people in housing? Well, you reduce cost, you reduce financial cost, number one. The cost for housing people is, on average, for a large group of people, about one quarter of having to provide them with medical services or police services. Jose, San Jose did a large study over six years, fifty-three percent of the cost of treating the homeless was medical, thirty-four percent was, was police services. The second thing that's been talked about is the ecological cost. It is substantial. And when San Jose cleared out the jungle, which housed up to three hundred people a few years ago, they removed six hundred tons of waste and fifteen hundred pounds of human waste. So there is a problem. But there is a benefit as well. These people are human, like you and I. They don't always walk in the same straight line that we do, sort of straight line, but they nonetheless are valuable as individuals. And if we can help them be housed, help them find employment, give them a hand up rather than a handout, a dollar in their pocket instead of nickel in their hand, then we've affirmed their worth as individuals and we've helped save money, save the environment, and create a better life for people who actually deserve a better life. So our group intends to try to put something up within the next year or so, if we can get through all the hurdles. But we are firmly committed with a laser focus that this best solution that can be offered for somebody who is homeless is to put them in a house. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Rashkin.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name's Sam Rashkin, I'm from Monterey County. I started working with the homeless problem in two thousand and nine as a public official. In Monterey, we had a major homeless problem. We had a public homeless problem, meaning they came there because they wanted to be there. It was their home. They came to the waterfront because they could earn money from panhandling, from making little products, from doing little chores. They like to be near services, they like to be near stores. They, they are people who have needs in social structures. But it is a big, big public problem that will cost businesses money and cost residents heartbreak if they don't work on it. I do want to remind everyone here that there's different classifications of homeless with different needs. We have the elderly, they're at risk, they're very quiet people, I worry about them the most. We have veterans who have PTSD and psychological problems. A lot of homeless people have psychological problems, and that really hasn't been discussed here, yet we have a lot of social service providers. There's just a gap bringing those people together. The project I worked on after leaving government was what we called Motor Homeless. These are families who lived in RVs and cars, and this was the at-risk group that if they lost their car, a lot of these people had jobs, by the way. I would say seventy percent of those people had thirty-hour-a-week jobs, they just couldn't afford fifteen hundred dollars for rent, plus, plus, plus. We, we had a great deal of success as a public agency helping that particular group because we could identify them. And of course, the transient people who go through the programs. One of the problems we did have, because we did have low-income housing, is how do you allocate that fairly? Because there is a much larger need than there was a supply. You know, do we give it to families, do we give it to elderly, do we give it to sick people, and how do we get people out of that process once they're in it? Several people have talked about the, the social cost, and homeless is not a fun topic to get people really involved in, they, they want it to go away, but the social cost is tremendous, medical costs, police enforcement. So there is a basic reason to get even people who don't like homeless to understand that we're all in this together. But I, I'm here tonight to talk about Safeway specifically, and I've got a minute to do it. That is a dangerous, messy problem, please don't go back there. We have an ecology problem that's getting worse and worse. There's a social risk there because your customers come there, and there's a lot of liability from the landowner, from the business owners, that we can talk to them and get them collaboratively working on it. But the basic problem there is basic human needs. So if we can do anything the next forty-eight hours, restrooms, you know, clean and safe, safe and clean, restrooms and dumpsters and the very basic elements to get the ball moving to cleaning that up, and the landowners will work with us. I, I worked with the government before, and there's a way you can talk to them and show them the benefit for them getting on board, on board with this. Thank you very much. City council, you're, you're doing a very good job.
Thanks very much, Sam. I don't have any other speaker cards. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on the issue? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to my fellow council members. I'll just point out, so this meeting was noticed for a discussion of winter twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen needs. So there's, there's lots of need, there's lots of need for permanent supportive housing, you know, collaboration, et cetera, et cetera. We're not going to solve Half Moon Bay's homeless problem here tonight. It's going to require a bigger discussion about housing policy, et cetera, et cetera. So I would recommend that we stick to a discussion of what to do about winter services because that's kind of the, the urgent matter at hand and that, you know, we discuss issues of permanent supportive housing or related at a future meeting, a regular council meeting where all council members can participate in the discussion. So I'd like to ask you how you feel about that. Councilmember Rambach.
Makes sense to me. I, we have short-term, intermediate terms, and long-term needs, and I think this meeting should address the short-term needs. Those of you who've seen Game of Thrones know winter is coming.
Vice Mayor Penrose.
Yes. I know that's the focus, and that's, that's the focus that I have. What do we do? Winter is coming. I, I think there are, the biggest problem that I see is that if we move people out of the area behind Safeway, we are obligated as human beings to treat them as equals and to take care of them. Because of the psychological issues and, and the physical issues that they have, that's not an easy thing to do. Land is the biggest issue that I see as being the hardest problem. The daytime issue, I think we can deal with. I, I can see us putting three, four people into 555 Kelly. I'd like to see us go ahead and get the coastal, coastal development permit. I'd like to see us- I'd like to see us address the need to assess the ADA compliance issue, the electrical issues, lead paint, any of those issues that we've got to address. And I'd like, if we say it's going to take several months, let's do it in half of that time. Let's do it in a month. If we really have the will to do it, we can get it done. We've got people here on the coast who will volunteer to help. I don't, I don't see us saying we can't do anything. And that's, that's the feeling that I get every time we bring this problem up. It's too big to deal with. But as someone from the public said, we've got 40 people. If we can help 10 of those people, we've done something. If we can't help anybody because it's just too big a problem to look at, then shame on us.
I want to bring us back to the discussion of, of winter shelter. As proposed by the county, it would need to be 24/7, and the services would be provided there. So, I actually see the issue of 555 Kelly somewhat separate from the issue of, of winter shelter. So, there's a need for overnight shelter. There's a need for daytime services. As originally proposed by the county, those two are married in a, in a winter shelter. So, I don't know that we actually need to deal with 555 Kelly on a short-term basis if, in fact, there's a place to do services where people are also living during the three winter months. So, for the purposes of facilitating discussion, I think we need to identify where, what are the potential sites in Half Moon Bay for a tent to shelter up to 40 people 24/7 and provide the facilities necessary to support public health and safety and get services in. I think that's the most immediate need. Who's going to provide that land? Where's that land? Who's willing to put that land out there? You know, if we don't have a winter shelter, then that's another thing. But it seemed to me the purpose of this meeting was to identify, is there the potential for a winter shelter here?
Well, I did ask that we investigate 555 Kelly, and staff has done that work on identifying the issues with 555 Kelly for a daytime place. I know we've talked about three or four potential places, but so far, we haven't gotten to the point where we've got land to use. So, until we have individual discussions with the two or three potential spots, you know, one of them being behind Safeway, but that requires talking to the new owners of Safeway. One of the possibilities is out here behind the EOC where the farmer's market is. There was the potential for the church. There's the post land, which is a potential area. I don't know any other spots. But if we can't do a, if we can't come up with land, then what do we do? Where do we go from there? Do we just say, oh dear, we couldn't find a spot for these homeless people to protect them from the inclement weather, therefore, we can't do anything? Or do we say, okay, if we can't do that, let's do something?
No, we're not going to entertain public interaction right now. Councilmember Rambach.
I agree with both of you. I think the immediate need is a shelter that provides services and that we get that up, probably a tent, and before the rains come. I really think that's important. And I don't think that we should implement this policy of kicking out the encampment behind Safeway and putting the fence up that we've been talking about until we have a place where the homeless people can hang out. So, I think the order should be, let's find a place, and then we'll worry about cleaning out that encampment, which has to happen. I'm not advocating we don't do that, but I think it's inhumane to kick people out if they have no place to go. So, that's where I'm coming from. I heard Eric say something about the city owns land behind Safeway. I didn't know about that. That's interesting to find out. The sites that Councilmember Penrose just mentioned are all possibilities. I would love to leave this meeting, if at all possible, with some kind of assurance that one of those sites could be the location of a tent that we would have during the winter months. I really think it's, it's incumbent upon us to help the homeless by having this available to them and doing that as soon as possible.
Well, we're not going to leave here with that assurance because these properties are privately owned. So, I think at the most, we can give direction to staff to, on an urgent basis, to contact certain property owners to see if we have, you know, willing engagement. We're not going to assure anything coming out of here. All right? Hate to, you know, put a hole in your balloon. So, you know, obviously, to me, it seems like the low-hanging fruit is next to Safeway. I think they need to come out of the creek for safety reasons. We had somebody drown last year. So, you know, pull them back onto the pavement behind Safeway, if possible, if the property owner is willing. Otherwise, the city-owned property is actually in the buffer next to the creek. It's in vegetation that's going to be muddy. There's not enough space there for a tent. Okay. So, I would say, my direction would be engage the owner, the new owner of the Safeway property with the idea that this is a temporary solution during the winter months and see if that's a go. Next to the EOC, we have large paved parking areas. You know, talk to the people who own Shoreline Station. We have city owns Beechwood and Glen Creek, which are wet, as we know, in the winter. They have ESHA issues. I suppose there's the potential for the post property. It's actually pretty out of the way. Along a road where there's no sidewalk, that seems to me a little bit of an outlier, but we could look at that if the others fail, I suppose. I'm not aware of any other locations. I drove by the fire station, looking at the parking lot. It's large, but it has a lot of construction material on it right now because they're building the, the practice fire tower. I'm going to be honest, I think it's really disappointing that the churches are not stepping up on a inclement weather program. Some say they don't have enough space. I don't get it, really. I would expect churches to step up, and I've said that last year, and I'm going to say it again this year. Really takes a village to address this problem. Seems to me the Lutheran Church has a very large parking lot that would accommodate a tent. I understand they've said no. I don't quite get that, but they have their reasons. The congregation probably has their reasons. So, I think this is all we can do at this point relative to a winter shelter. If there are folks who know other properties that might accommodate it, let us know quickly. You know, we're, we're coming on to the rainy season. I think it's, I think San Mateo County is doing an incredible job. It does it for all its social services. San Mateo County is really enlightened. The people working on the homeless issues are astonishing to me, the fact that there's so many good services here on the coast and over the hill. But we have an urgent issue that, that remains unsolved, and that's the winter inclement weather shelter. So, I attended a meeting last year where that whole concept failed. It was a disappointment, disappointment to me, a big disappointment, but it's not happening. So, I don't know what we can do at this point, but we'll, we'll give it the college try. And, you know, I like the idea of rental housing for the, the senior community. I know that one of those individuals has refused housing as a $2,000 housing voucher and does not want to be sheltered. So, we can't force people into it. If there's a way to streamline improvements at 555 Kelly, but I see that more as a housing issue as opposed to a winter services shelter. I'm not sure where else to go with this. I think I'll entertain suggestions. Councilmember Rambach.
Has the Catholic Church been ruled out? They have a wonderful lot that's centrally located, that's not used. That would be a perfect site, in my opinion. Have they refused to consider putting a tent on that lot?
I'm not sure if you're directing that question to staff. Staff has, council has not given council, staff direction to work on a winter shelter.
I would like to give staff direction to work on a winter shelter.
The Catholic Church has offered the lot behind, behind the church as a place to put an inclement shelter, inclement weather shelter. The, that happened during the proposal that the county put out, looking for a, a one-month nighttime shelter. The county said no, that, that their proposal did not meet the RFP that they put out. The, the objection to having a shelter behind the Catholic Church that I've heard is that some of the homeless have psychological or behavioral problems that might put the schoolchildren nearby in danger. I think if a shelter is properly policed and, and managed, that that, those issues can be minimized and maybe even eliminated. But my, my feeling about 555 Kelly is that if we were able to get an overnight shelter someplace else in the city, and we couldn't get a 24-hour shelter, or that was too prohibited by cost, we have this property, we're going to want to look at it anyway for whether it's ADA compliant or has other environmental issues. I'm saying there's no reason why we can't do that now and quickly so that we've got that as a backup for a daytime shelter and possibly shelter for three homeless individuals. That would be three vouchers that we could use that would even bring the city income for the use of that place.
Councilmember Rambach, you have basically given staff direction to go ahead and investigate winter shelter.
Correct.
I certainly support that. I think we have a unanimous support of, of working on that issue with those potential sites.
So, I'd like some clarity. If, if that's the will of the council, I think that there are next steps that we must approach. I would recommend there's a big component of community input that's required. Location identification, money, and a service provider that the county can enter into an agreement with. The county, the city is not equipped to enter into an agreement with the service provider. This is not what we do. We don't know how to do it. So, I would recommend that the county, we have to check to see if the county is willing to do that in terms of entering with an agreement, say with Life Moves or some other agency. So, there are several steps that must take place. And, and the last thing that will have to happen is we need to, I'll have to ask the council to reprioritize the other projects that we're working on. This will take all hands on deck. So, cannabis, or the cleanup, or the, I have a whole list of potentials. We don't have to do that now, but there's a whole list of things that will have to be put on hold, and the deck has to be reshuffled because we simply don't have anybody to just take this on. This will take the entire staff to make this happen.
I'm going to add to the load, then. I think it would be helpful to know if there are lodging operators in the area that would accept hotel vouchers during inclement weather.
We can certainly look at that. As I've mentioned, I have experience in this field. I've did this for seven years and past lives. And again, folks can correct me. There are very few hotels that will take the hotel vouchers. Generally, they're not tourist-serving hotels that will take the hotel vouchers. Certainly, we could look into that. We could ask the county because they have the contacts. I, they've had issues. I talked to Eliana about this as well. They've had trouble in terms of locating hotels because the, in, with their past experience, there's been damage done to the hotels. They've had to, in fact, put up insurance when they are housing folks. So, in the community where I worked before, there were only two hotels in a population of about 100,000 that would take the vouchers, and they were not very nice places.
I think another alternative might be, if the shelter thing doesn't work out, to potentially lease a, you know, large van, 15-passenger van, to take people over to the, the winter shelters over the hill as opposed to relying on taxi cabs or Uber and Lyft or something like that. It might be more convenient if they could be accompanied over the hill to the winter shelters rather than leaving it up to them as, as individuals to...
We could certainly look into that.
Yeah. So, we have that. So, going back to 555 Kelly, do you feel it would behoove us to have more information on what it would take to bring that up to code?
Again, we can look into that. That takes people resources, so the priority is where you'd like the priority to be. I will almost guarantee you that it will be more than $210,000. That is the cost of the three-month winter shelter that we think is about the cost of the three-month winter shelter. It'll probably take more than three months, and it'll probably be more than $230,000.
I think on that as well, it's important for us to understand how the council would like us to investigate using it because using it for daytime services, almost like an office and a gathering place, could be very different than using it as a place for people to sleep. So, I think that, and John, he's nodding yes, so Public Works agrees, depending on how we want to use it, that will help us figure out what we need to investigate specifically and get pricing for, which I think is an important component of it.
Well, I want to say two things. One is, I'd like to know, I would like to know what the difference is between looking at it for daytime use and looking at it for overnight use. To me, that's looking, then you're looking at bathrooms. You still have to look at bathrooms. The other one is bedrooms.
Correct. So, there's, and John can interject at any point. There's different code sections even. I know within the ADA, whether you're talking about lodging or a public meeting facility, there's different requirements. It also depends on if we're going to do overnight accommodations. Then you have to start looking at the sex of the residence and how they are placed in that home, which can really determine how we kind of chop up the house a little bit versus daytime use where that's not the same concern. So, I think, understanding that, they're really two very different uses, and to get proper, you know, the investigation of the issues with the house and ADA compliance to get in and out of the house, that we can do now. The getting estimates and architects to look at, okay, how can we use this and modify it for a particular use? I think it's important we have an understanding of what we want to do so that we don't send them down the wrong tangent.
If I, again, may interject.
Oh, and the kitchen. Thank you, John. The kitchen is a big piece of that. For daytime use, there may not need to be a kitchen. For nighttime use, there probably are code requirements that require modifications to the kitchen.
So, if we go down this route similarly, this is essentially, in terms of the next steps that I outlined previously, that's location. So, we still have to deal with community input. We still have to deal with the dollars, still have to find a provider that'd be willing to provide the services. If it's overnight, we have to provide space for overnight folks to stay there as well overnight, so that takes up some of the space that needs to be available, that would be available. So, again, fixing the place up is essentially location in terms of the steps that I outlined previously.
So, it sounds to me like it might be less expensive to allow overnight stays, you know, in the EOC as opposed to spending money retrofitting 555 Kelly. If we allowed cots here on inclement weather nights, and people go someplace else for services, seems to me, you know, this is already a public facility. I understand Ted Edcock has a lot more going on, but I'm just throwing this out there as an alternative to spending a lot of money retrofitting the house when the council and the public hasn't had a chance yet to weigh in on what to do with this fairly large public investment in property.
It's certainly a public policy decision. This is the EOC, so we will have no EOC in case of an emergency, and we have our emergencies during the winter.
So it would be nice to have information about that use. Or, you know, maybe it is the Edcock, I don't know, but this would buy us some time in dealing with 555 Kelly, if in a pinch, in really bad weather, we can accommodate a bunch of cots. I'm just throwing that out there.
Let me make sure I understand. So you're not talking about a three-month shelter, you're talking about perhaps if it rains one night, then we are opening it for a night or two?
I'm thinking more opportunistically, you know, on very cold, very rainy nights. I don't know if that's possible, but at least it's better in a pinch than, you know, nothing at all. I'm just, I'm trying to throw out options.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just trying to narrow the options, because all these take people resources to research.
I know. I'm going to diverge from normal practice and allow a little bit of public engagement, a little more public engagement on this issue. So if there are other people who would like to speak, and you haven't filled out a blue card, fill out a blue card and bring that up. I will take people who want to speak again after new people have spoken. So if there are other people who haven't spoken that would like to, please fill out a blue card and bring them up. Tricia, you look like you have something to say.
Yeah, and I, you know, I just, I'm not quite...
Could you please go up to the podium and then fill out a blue card?
Not quite sure how to articulate this, but there never seems to be the right people at the table. So there's a dressing council, right, and then you take it in, and then you talk amongst yourself. But there's not, and it's kind of what you're doing now. You know, you're saying, "This isn't normal practice, bring people back." But there were so many times that I thought, "Wait a minute, he knows the answer. Oh, he has an idea." But, so, I just don't know how to get the right, you know, so I think of Lori McKinney's place, right? And that's where Abundant Grace is going to rent space for a couple of months and, you know, have dry space in the day. So that's really good. That's really good. Please? Mid-November.
Is that a definite?
Yes.
Is it a definite?
Fine. She's sending the lease, so it's pretty near definite. So there we have, and it's a month-to-month lease, and it's this big warehouse.
Go for it.
A place for dry clothes, it's a place, you know, it's a place to come in and hang out and have heaters and have dryers. Really, it can't be much better. Really, in fact, some cots could be thrown in there. I'm sure there's issues with that. But it's a thing, you know? So the two things is going back and forth, getting the right people at the table, and then the frickin' will. "Oh, we can't because of this, and we can't..." You're all saying that. I get it. But it's, 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 ah!
Excuse me?
So I guess that's...
Could you just state your name for the record, please? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You called me out. I didn't...
I'm sorry. It's okay.
I know, it was like... Tricia Dell.
Thank you.
Yeah.
State your affiliation as well.
I am a board member at Abundant Grace, and I sit on the, what are we called? Half-Moon Bay Housing Homeless Coalition. Collaborative. I am a part of that, too. And just a community caring, community person. But I, of everything, that property seems like the best bet for something, for something.
That is really great news.
It is.
Been able to clarify this.
In terms of support, and what Eric said, and I know this is just thrown out a huge thing, you know, the dream was to buy that place, because that could turn into housing. There is housing, there is space. There's actually place in the back, all stuff that would require permitting and figuring out and all that stuff. But it is a place that could happen right now, and if somebody wants to buy it, it sounds like, how can we buy it? How can we come together? How can we figure it out? I don't know, but that's...
The city already has budgeted $50,000 to help with this issue.
It's 1.5 to buy that whole property. So we...
I'm just talking about, you know, potential services when you start in November, but that's another, that's not agendaized, so I can't really discuss that.
I know. I'm just, in the spirit of going back and forth in real time, and not, you know, so, yeah. It's so, it is good news. And how can we build on it together? What can we do together? And if this person buys it, how can we work with that person to make it happen? You know, just things like you can't imagine right now. I'm trying to just kind of be open and...
Thank you. Can you wait until we see if we have other people who would like to speak? Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Donald, you're up again.
Okay, I completely agree with Tricia. We have on the coast here incredible people living here, absolutely amazing. I'm so impressed tonight. All the people that showed up, and here, all the stuff that's going on, it's all good positive stuff. But then, we get to the city council, and we said what we're going to do, and we're like stuck. We're at an impasse. These people, they are the resource. This Laura McKinney's building, she wanted to have a veterinarian office in there. It was too much work, so she went and went, moved into where the senior housing place was, and she remodeled that. It's a beautiful facility. Like they said, it's away from everything, and 200, quarter of a billion dollars, you can get, start getting into it. Spend a million dollars on this useless house on 555 Kelly Street. At the bottom of Kelly Street, 10 years ago, bought this useless lot, we got like, spent a whole bunch of money on land, we got wave crest. Half-Moon Bay's got all this money, and all you need is a little bit for these homeless people. It is absolutely disgusting back behind Safeway's. That gentleman that was here earlier, he lives on Bellevue, it's terrible for those people. They're taxpayers, they deserve more. We got creeks, very sensitive habitat. I don't think anyone's ever really been back there. I've been back there. I drive back there quite a lot. When I go to Safeway's, I swing by there. You can often see 30, 40 people just living there. And where do they like urinate? So, you know, 555 Kelly Street here, you could knock that down, it's a scraper, that's what it is. It costs a fortune to get it ADA compliant. Scrape that off, put a tent on that. You have across the street, you have the gymnasium, which serves as an emergency center, and you have this building here, you have the Ted O'Callaghan Center, you've got plenty of bathrooms, lot of facilities, you've got medical facilities, everything's nearby, and you've got the police right by here to keep an eye on it. You could do that immediately, put a bulldozer and get a tent up. You know, I've camped with Boy Scouts, I've been Shasta, and we love doing it in the snow. Camping in a tent in the snow, it's great. We don't have that cold inclement weather here. It's, it is some of the most medium temperature in the whole of America is right here. The, and you can live in a tent, you can have porta potties. You know, we're going to have the pumpkin festival, we're going to have all these people coming to this town this weekend. Everything laid on, all the toilets, everything like that, and we can't just handle this little thing. You know, so many of these people have already been dealt with by these good people here. The thing is under control.
Thank you, Donald.
Thank you.
Sam Raschkin, and then Paulette.
So I think we all agree this is a big problem. One of the things that was helpful to me was to spend a lot of time talking to the actual homeless people themselves. They'll tell you what they're going to do if we try to move them, they'll tell you where they're going to move. These are people who actually, a lot of them enjoy this lifestyle. There's also, we have migrant workers working, living behind Safeway, mixed in with drug-using people and people with psychological issues. So it's, once again, even behind Safeway, it's not a, you know, it's not a common problem with one solution, but that is a problem. And I think maybe addressing that problem at the exact same time we identify possible alternate locations for temporary housing, but the trouble is, these people are going to come there and set up, and it's going to make people nervous, and they're messy. So I'm going to go back to what I said at the beginning. I'd like to get at least toilets and dumpsters behind Safeway within 48 hours. That would be a start, and it would also be a signal that, hey, things are going to change, guys. And then we can start that discussion to say, okay, things are changing now, it's going to be raining. What are your ideas? And we have so many strong people with nonprofits also who have resources and assets. And that's why I keep coming to Half-Moon Bay versus other cities. Everything, these people are saying is true. Everything's in place. We have the community support, we have the revenue, and we have a willing city council. We just need to match the services with the actual needs of the individuals, and that's all I have to say about that. Thank you very much.
I don't think everything's in place. I think that we have a lot of great agencies, obviously, working with the homeless. I think that's wonderful. But again, we don't have the land. We have a very, we have an expensive place here. I was just reading that San Francisco has been giving vouchers and sending people to live in near Sacramento, Brentwood, all kinds of places that, where the real estate is a lot less expensive than it is in San Francisco. Because the future for those people who may want to get back into the workforce, or who are, you know, are the ones that need that leg up, that's going to be difficult here, because we don't have, this isn't a large employment area, and the real estate is very expensive. It's hard for people to live here. And those people who do have property, like myself, who lives very close to the Lutheran Church, are very concerned about the McKinney property, and about that being turned into any kind of a major homeless center. And with it comes the, many problems, because as we've identified, as all the professionals have identified here, we have a lot of homeless here with psychological problems, behavior problems, drug problems, alcohol problems. And we're a small community with a lot of young children, and almost anywhere you turn, there's either a nursery, a daycare, a school, and this is why the cannabis issue is also a potential problematic issue for a community that is this small and this family-oriented. So there are no, there, I have yet to see any town, I have been reading endlessly about everything I can get my hands on when it comes to the homeless population throughout North America. I've been to Canada, I've been here. Nobody has a handle on this. This is a very, very big problem, and Half-Moon Bay, I don't see Half-Moon Bay as being the place that's going to solve it. So it may be 40 people now, if we create services here, if we make this a business in that sense, if we make the homeless like a product, there will be more than 40 coming here. You can find housing for this many, and then there's still that many that are trying to inhabit the, whether it's behind Safeway, or land that's further in the open spaces. They come, and they come especially if there are services. And so I think we have to think about this very, very carefully, so.
I would agree with that. Contrary to what some have said, I don't believe that this is, you know, a problem that has a simple solution. There's a great quote that says, you know, "If you have a clear, simple solution, it's probably wrong," or "most likely wrong." So there's a lot of regulation around this that we have to pay attention to. There are a lot of financial considerations and social considerations. So we've at least been thinking about this and worried about this and considering options, so I think, you know, that's pretty darn good. And if we can solve a little piece of it, you know, we will, but we're not going to solve the whole thing. And I agree, I don't think we want to make the community a magnet for additional housing, but we want to take care of those who are here, and who actually have lived in Half-Moon Bay sometimes, or part of our community, they've created community here. It's a little bit different situation than a transient population like in Long Beach, where I occasionally work, and where people are coming from all over the country to live there and circulating around. So this is a special situation, I think, we have. We're working on it. Staff will come back with some numbers and data, and try to knock off the issues of some of these properties, and see what we can do.
If I could just summarize to make sure that we are understanding. So we will look at some potential properties that were listed, that the council articulated a moment ago. I'm just trying to figure out whether, so I think simultaneously, we can potentially put together a plan in terms of the other elements, the community input, the dollars, and the county. Or would you like for us to bring that, the location, forward to you first, and then talk about the other items afterwards?
Councilmember Rarbach.
I just have a couple of comments about this very informative public input. Sam, I agree with you that having porta potties and a dumpster behind Safeway makes a lot of sense. I advocated for that, and I was told, "No way." So just for your information, that doesn't seem to be a goal. If I remember correctly, in the spring, when we had our strategic planning workshop, there was a presentation from Abundant Grace on doing pretty much what was presented here with the McKinney property. And at that point, I believe, the city council requested that, "Come back with a proposal, a written proposal, and we would very, we would be very, we'd consider it very seriously." And as far as I know, we're still waiting. So please, we want to help, we have money, send us a proposal, we know what we're talking about, and then we can go from there.
If we're looking at more than, you know, 45, 60 more days, and not having a solution here, then we do need to talk about restrooms and a dumpster behind Safeway, especially with a lot of the winter runoff exacerbating the problems of trash and hygiene. And so when we're talking to them about a winter tent, and they don't like that idea, then tell them, then we need to look for another place, it's going to take a while, and we want you to put a restroom, or, you know, porta potties and a dumpster back there on, you know, the property, even if it's on our property, adjacent to their property. We have to take care of that situation. It's all going to be washed into the creek, otherwise, so.
Okay, again, so I just want to summarize. We're going to look into the different locations. We'll look into hotel vouchers. We're looking into a van to potentially transport folks from this side to the inclement weather shelters and the other locations. And we can check with the property owners of the Safeway area for the use of their property for restrooms and/or dumpsters, and dumpsters. I will say that in order for us to provide this information at the next meeting, there will be no staff report, because that's in like a couple of days. What we will probably do is provide an update that we can do under the manager's report. We'll work with the city attorney to figure that out, but there will be no staff report, because they're due yesterday, or actually, two weeks ago. And moving forward, depending on how quickly we move forward, so I'm saying that so that the public understands that the information will not be as part of the packet. We just can't do that. And some of these other projects will be put on hold in order for us to make this happen.
Is there time to do one of those fabulous staff PowerPoint presentations at the beginning of the meeting, to give a little city manager's report, or...
We will do our best.
Okay. Vice Mayor Penrose.
Yeah, can we also look into the EOC as a possible location?
I just want to close by saying, I agree with the vice mayor that we need to look at 555 Kelly, but I think that needs to be on a regular agenda with full council discussion. You know, as we saw in the newspaper, various council members have various ideas on the use of that property. I don't think it would be wise for us in this special meeting to trump that bigger discussion and allow the public to weigh in. We're using public tax dollars to buy this land. It was a million bucks. So, I think we need to have a bigger conversation about 555 Kelly. You're not looking very happy.
I'm not. I don't think, I don't think we need a larger discussion in any way. I think that we do, to have the discussion, one of the things we're going to need is to have the information of what it's going to cost and how feasible it is to use the property. So, I think we go ahead and get that information, and then we bring it back to council for a further discussion. And then the other thing I wanted to say is, I'm sorry about the difficulty that staff has trying to manage all of the projects you've got, but I do think that this takes priority over cannabis and any of the other issues.
The fact that we have legal obligations as far as the state's concerned and whatever ordinance we have moving forward on cannabis, even if it's ratifying what it is we're doing. So, yeah.
So, that's what we, that's the direction. I think the comments that we heard today are helpful for us. We'll bring back for the council what we can, what we can by, between now and Tuesday. Again, I will, we have our executive team meeting tomorrow. We'll figure out what we can, what's not urgent, and we will put that aside between now and then so that we can work on this because it will take lots of people resources.
Let's move on. Rarback.
Thank you to staff for pulling this meeting together so quickly and organizing it so well and notifying it, and actually having done a lot of homework, brought a lot of information to us. Really appreciate that. Thank you. Good job. And thank you to all the public who spent, you know, their Wednesday afternoon coming here and talking to us and sharing with us what you're, what you're doing and your vision for things. That's really important. I can't remember when we've had a turnout at a special meeting, you know, in the afternoon like this. So, thank you.
Okay, so this is not our field of expertise. The county has a whole office of homelessness. They have human services agency. Counties generally do this type of work, and they haven't been able to solve the homelessness issue, and they've got hundreds and hundreds of people working on this. So, my recommendation is that the, even if the money is coming from the city, we would funnel that through the county so that the county can then enter into an agreement with a nonprofit who would know how to structure that agreement appropriately so that we get what we need and what we want. Because we're not able to structure that agreement. That's not what we do. I think it'll depend on what the solution is, but I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to commit to something that we're not well-equipped to do and to have this fail.
We shouldn't feel, you know, we shouldn't allow people to be cold and wet in the winter. That's, that's why we're here today. And the housing, permanent supportive housing, that's all great stuff, but our immediate concern, the reason we're here today is...
Prioritizing that law.
It's a priority because we actually have obligations to the state to do some action. So, okay? We have to abide by the law as well. Okay? Yeah. Thank you.